Call to order and according on members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Thank you. Line number three, consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Three point one, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
There are none.
Minutes of the January ninth regular meeting, approval of the finance report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of that child nutrition report declaring the following items as surplus.
So if you look at the agenda item three point two, January ninth, two thousand twenty-three minutes, see any errors with those? If you'll open up agenda item three point three, you will see the top attachment are the January investments, which are going to be current and up to date. And our bottom attachment is the monthly report that I provide you on our default chargeables. And so you can see we have continued to overcollect in our gross production. We still lag behind, which has been the trend in motor vehicle. We are overcollecting in our REA tax and our accounting form bill, and we're just a little bit behind in school land earnings. If you look at the next page, you can see from those charts, it gives you a graphic comparison for our revenue and expense for FY twenty-three to FY twenty-two. And then if you look at the last page of that attachment, I've put those numbers in there. To date, through the month of January, we've seen an increase of five hundred and ninety thousand approximately in revenue, and we've spent approximately two hundred and fifty-two thousand more. So we've seen a real good increase with our collections. Obviously, as we all know, the inflationary cost, things are costing more than we purchase. Our staff and administrators are doing a very good job with those expenses. Agenda item three point four, our monthly activity fund reports, if you'll open the top attachment. You can see in that top attachment, that gives the report for the month of January for each one of our activity accounts. Appreciate the work that Mrs. Burkey does with these accounts, which we all know there are a lot of activities, deposits, purchase orders that come out of these. All of our accounts are in good standing. If you open the second attachment, you will then see the year-to-date totals for those accounts. Our activity fundraisers, agenda item three point five, we do not have any this month. Agenda item three point six, we have one transfer, interaccount transfer. It is for cheerleading. They purchased student council, they purchased T-shirts from student council for homecoming, and that's an interaccount transfer to pay for those T-shirts. Agenda item three point seven is our child nutrition report. If you'll look at the child nutrition report, three point seven, that attachment, make this a little bigger, you can see that we are down in twenty-two, twenty-three in the month of January, did not serve as many lunches or breakfast for both of those. It's kind of been an up and down year for that. We can probably anticipate a lot of that as a result, that we are charging for all meals, and meals are free at this point, like we have the past, the previous two years. So there's a little difference there in the amount served. And then agenda item three point eight, there are no items of surplus. Are there any questions with the consent agenda? And if there are none, I would recommend it's approved.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda, those items, four points, one, three point two, three point eight.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number four point four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year twenty-three. Four point one, the general fund as referenced, four point two, the building fund as referenced, and four point three, the child nutrition fund as referenced.
Agenda item four point one, if you'll open your top attachment there, those are the general fund purchase orders for the month of January. Go through a few of those, purchase order number three sixty-three, two thousand one hundred with the K twenty center. That will be professional development on February the sixteenth, twentieth, the twentieth, will be professional development where we're going to work with them on professional learning communities. This is a important part of our strategic plan. We'll kind of touch on professional development communities later in the, in the meeting, but that'll be a good training from the K twenty center. Purchase order number three sixty-four, twelve thousand eight hundred and thirteen fifty, that is a contract with Share Medical Center. That'll be an agenda item later. We are going to be working with them to staff for some medical needs of a student. And so we hope this partnership continues to expand with Share. They've been great to work with on this, on this issue. Purchase order number three sixty-seven, eight thousand one hundred and thirty with Bank Central. That was some recabling that we've done to improve the infrastructure here at the high school with our, our door locks and moving servers and so forth. Purchase order number three eighty, that general fund purchase order for three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine for Midwest Music. That was for band equipment that was ordered this summer, and Mr. Stewart just received a notice that that company had gone out of business. So we refunded that, and now he's going to order that to get that equipment in. The second attachment on agenda item four point one, if you will open that.
You asked a question there on those.
Yes.
Share Medical Center amount is for year, correct?
It's for the remainder of the days of this school year.
Just this semester?
Yes, yeah, so it's, it's, what will happen is the employee that they have that will serve our student will clock in and out, and we'll pay according to the days that they serve our students.
So that's just an allotted amount that we might use?
Correct.
And it's for, just what services we need in general, or?
This is for one particular student. We have, don't want to, let's see.
No, that's okay.
It's for one particular student that we have some needs with, and so we contracted with them for the remaining days of the school year. There may be days where they are unable to staff, or that student may be gone, and on those days, we won't pay for that. But this is a, basically an open purchase order to cover the cost of that contract.
So they might be covering daily?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, uh-huh.
Sorry, I just didn't quite understand that.
Okay, the second attachment, the general fund purchase orders for payroll, those are substitute teachers and new paraprofessional teachers aides. Agenda item four point two, we will open that attachment, it's our building fund. Couple of purchase orders to go over there, purchase order number fifty, Grey Dog Mechanical, that is an open purchase order for repairs and supplies. Purchase order number fifty-three with Kyler Construction, ninety-four thousand, that's our cafeteria renovation that we approved at last month's board meeting. Purchase order number fifty-five, six thousand with Grey Dog, that's to replace a unit at Alba Middle School. Purchase order number fifty-eight, Grey Dog Mechanical, that is to replace a heat pump in Coach Horn's room here at the high school. Purchase order number fifty-nine, one thousand six hundred and ninety-five eighty, that is retreat solution, and those are janitorial supplies. Any questions about the building fund? Okay, child nutrition fund, if you'll open that attachment. Purchase order number twenty-four, two hundred thousand, Kyler Construction. This is a part of the cafeteria renovation that was approved at last month's board meeting. That is the federal allotment of amount of money that we're going to be spending. Purchase order number twenty-five, one thousand two hundred with Vendetti Plumbing, those are repairs to the Washington dish碗. Any questions about child nutrition fund? If there are no further questions, I would recommend approval of our purchase order encumbrances for the general fund, building fund, and child nutrition fund.
One question on the general fund. So we approved the Share Medical Center dollar amount now, but then we approved the contract later?
Correct. Correct, so we already encumbered the money because we do purchase orders to start that contract with them, but then we've always brought any contract that we're going to enter into, to the board for approval.
And they already started their services?
Mr. Feely, has the LPN started? Yes. Any other questions?
I'd make a motion that we approve four point one, four point two, and four point three as presented.
Second. Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, we have two resignations to acknowledge to the board. The first is from Dolby Rose. He's resigning his position as high school baseball assistant. And you see the second attachment there is from Nicole Riggs, and she is resigning her position as Washington paraprofessional. For communication this month, I created a handout, I thought it might be easier for you all to read. It's a legislative outlook provided by the Council of School Administrators. Provide you some information on bills that have been filed. Over three thousand bills have been filed to start this legislative session. This will give you some of the information and things that you can begin tracking with regard to education and some other miscellaneous bills. I believe today was the first session that they met. Okay, agenda item five point three. If you will open that attachment, I will reset this slide. The principal, principals have been working, all of us have been working together on an update for some of our action steps. So we wanted to talk about a few of those action steps. This first one, educate parents on the common language of student engagement and content area literacy. And ideas might include, and you can see those listed. If you remember when we went through this process, these were all community-driven action steps from our stakeholders. And so I will turn it over to, start with Mr. Feely to talk a little about what they have done to meet this action step.
We've had a literacy night during parent-teacher conferences where our title teachers set up a book walk down in the cafeteria. So in between or while they're waiting, they can take their kids down to do this book walk. And I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know that it meets the standard of this particular initiative because we're not having those discussions about what that actually looks like in classroom instruction. So that's something we need to do a little bit better at Washington.
At Longfellow, we did something similar. Dr. Oswald at the college and Mrs. Hill got together and Dr. Oswald had some of her education students do some literacy stations in our cafeteria during parent-teacher conferences where students could come participate, and her students mainly organized that for us.
We held a literacy for all parent meeting as we were starting our literacy project. We would have liked to have had a better attendance from, from families, but it was good information to get what we are doing in the classrooms. And then we also had our literacy evening of art night in our cafeteria throughout, where we do different things. And our title teacher, Mrs. Viningfield, did a good job with doing some fun poetry and bingo games in the cafeteria.
At the middle school, we had literacy nights on two different nights, and we had them correspond with basketball games to get more people into the building. So the sixth graders did a food truck presentation, and then the seventh grade did a reading fair, and they set that up in, in one of the rooms, and everybody walked through, so.
We had a reality check with Woods County Extension. The senior class goes in, and there are stations set up for them. They're given a printout, and they have to figure out what their role is that they've been given. They have a job and a, and a certain amount of money that they are allotted theoretically. They have a child or don't have a child, have to pay for daycare, don't have to pay for daycare, and figure out how to spend that money. Do they get a cell phone? Do they purchase insurance? All of those things. So it kind of took them through the opportunity to see what budgeting looked like and what life looked like maybe beyond our walls or something.
Okay, the next initiative that the administrators have worked on this year is a Grow Your Own program. And so really want to thank Dr. Oswald and Ms. Martini. They have met with Dr. Oswald, and so I will turn it over to them to kind of go over this slide.
Okay, so essentially, back in September, I sent out correspondence to all of the staff to see, you know, how many of them have completed degrees, how many of them were interested in tend, in attending Northwestern. And there were nineteen staff who, who said that they were interested in possibly going back to college and taking some classes. Some of them, you know, it's a very wide range. Some of them have completed a few hours, some of them, you know, have an associate's. And, you know, we, we have hired quite a few paras that actually have teaching degrees. So that's, that's neat to see also. So November thirtieth, we had a Grow Your Own meeting up here in the library, and some of those people brought in their transcripts. And Dr. Oswald and Dr. Riley had like individual conferences with each of them and looked at the requisites to get a teaching degree in early childhood and then in, in elementary, and then also if they wanted to go into, you know, middle school, high school. So they did that, looked at those plans of study. I have visited with Dr. Oswald since, and she said that there is now, there was an anonymous donor, and there is some summer scholarship money available. And she said this is, you know, fabulous for, for paras and stuff because they're not working during the summer. So a lot of them like to take classes at that time. So this, this scholarship is only available to paraprofessionals, and the preference will be given to people in Northwest Oklahoma, and it's based on financial need. And she, she just said, you know, we'd like to do everything that we can to kind of promote this and this ongoing partnership with Northwestern, and, you know, the best way to increase that participation is to just get the word out. We've got to advertise. So that's kind of our next step right now, and, and to make sure that, you know, she said there's a lot of people that have, you know, they're calling a lot of, a lot of our paras and, you know, having conversations with them and what they can do to help them get going, so.
So we appreciate Northwestern partnership. This is a really exciting program to contribute to further education, but also our folks that have done a lot for us, and to be able to advance their education, and hopefully they're creative. So really excited about this, and thankful to Northwestern, Dr. Oswald, and the education department for all of them.
Your meeting, district-wide or was it just?
Yes, district-wide, yes.
Okay, the next action, action step is research scheduling options for providing a professional learning community time during the school day at all sites. So I will turn it over to who was doing this.
Just a quick definition in simple terms of professional learning communities. Their approach to school improvement were groups of teachers were collaboratively at the school level, using data to improve student outcomes. And so they, and our goal is to provide time within the school day, which has kind of been the trick for all of us to be able to find time that they can all come together and meet, and what, now what are their students doing? So that's kind of been the goal that we've been working on throughout our schools.
Did, okay, so through the calendar next year, did we provide some time for some professional learning?
So one of the things, one of the things we do with our calendar is create some opportunities for some vertical alignment throughout the district. And so you'll notice on our calendar that we have, I believe it's quarterly, there's a Wednesday, but we'll do a early dismissal at two fifteen and run our buses, and that's going, going to be a time to allow all of our teachers, even between buildings, to get together and work on these professional learning communities. And it kind of goes hand in hand with our February twentieth date of our training with K twenty, as they're going to begin setting the stage on how those should work together. We've had some training previously at some buildings with those, but we haven't done it district-wide, and we feel like it would be really beneficial to bring our teachers together to look at those, those, the data and the instruction that goes with that. So let Mr. Feely kind of talk about each.
So that's how often? Is that a minute?
So it's going to be four times next year.
Quarterly now?
So this time last year, I went to our elective schedule committee and asked them if I had an idea that I'd gotten from another school, that we would take our music and PE and double those up on one day a week. So PE would have two classes, and then that would free up a fifty-minute block for the teachers to meet during that time. And it has worked okay, but it is a lot for the PE teacher and music teacher on those days. And so whether we can sustain that or not is a little up in the air. First grade and kindergarten do meet during the school day on, on that Thursday. It's been good for the classroom teachers. Pre-K is still meeting after school because we couldn't make it work with that grade level, but that's also something that they prefer. Pre-K actually preferred to meet after school. First grade actually prefers to meet after school as well. Kinder prefers to meet during the day because of family considerations, running the ball games and things like that. So we, we've looked at it several times, and we're going to look at it again this spring to see if we can actually continue to sustain that.
Do you bring in extra help when you do music?
There is an A in those rooms, we're going to help them.
At Longfellow, we have had PLCs in our schedule since the nineteen-twenty school year, and how we, which is when we first had our PLC training with K twenty. And how we've been able to do it there is we take advantage of their contract till three thirty, I take advantage of that time. And so from two forty-five to three thirty, once a week, my teachers meet. We have a, I, we arrange where there's one recess, third grade recess is at two forty-five, so that kind of takes care of that group of kids. The paras go out, and I'll go out and help with that recess, and then we'll take all the dismissal off of the certified teachers. This year, we did it a little bit differently. I used to have them all on the same day, second and third grade, and it got a little bit hard to cover everything, so this year I split them up. One grade has it on Monday, the other one has it on Tuesday, so that we have a little bit more staff to help cover those students' needs.
Do they report back to you, like what they've talked about? Does that mean they have?
We, we have had a, a pretty sense of agendas in the past. We've kind of let off the gas a little bit on that, and we, we need to come back together. The, the elementary admin team, we, we designed those, and we kind of let off the gas a little bit that, with that this past year, and where they had some talking points, and they had what data they were collecting that, that week, and then they would turn it in to us, yes.
You kind of answered your question, Jan, you answered a good question. So we, and I think K twenty can help us with that, is to create agendas because meetings need to be agenda-driven so they can be efficient. Because we don't, we want our teachers to be able to, you know, have, have some time, not only when they have these meetings, but there may be even preparation that has to happen when they get in there and discuss and talk. And so that can really only happen if you're really agenda-driven. And so we're hoping they can help provide us some guidance when they create those for teachers. And the principals really, I mean, have done a great job. There's been, there's been a lot on the plate of, of administrators over the last couple of years, and so it can kind of turn into something that, that, you know, you have to delegate what you're going to spend your time in. And so, but we know this is something that's really important, so get back on that and look at it.
I mean, you can agenda people to death, but given nature would be, you might just get in there and visit, which you might need worse than anything else, too.
That's right.
You know, nothing like, relationships are important. So I, I don't, I just wondered if they had accountability as to what they're talking about and how they, what they do with it when they, you know.
You want to go Lincoln first?
Oh, not bad. Sorry, Swett. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I got a little frustrated.
We were able to schedule it due to our happy to have specials in the afternoon time, seventy-five minutes on Thursdays for PLC time, and we've been able to really dig deep into the literacy project that we've been doing, and it gives us time to grade the writing, the writing pieces together and kind of look at how each of those students are doing with that, and get it all planned out. And the teachers have done a great job of organizing, and Mrs. Franz and Mrs. Clack have been both really good at getting the baseline for that, and everyone's worked well with that. We also use some in that, so that's what we've been doing.
Okay. At the middle school, it hasn't been as overly effective. It's very hard to come up with the best times to do that. I share staff with the high school and, you know, Longfellow, and then, you know, we have bus drivers. We have all just, all kinds of things that we have not been able to, challenges, they're just challenges for right now. We have been able to provide some, some good, you know, meetings through PD days that we have had for our ELA, our math, through ICLE, and that's kind of helped us to look back at some of our data and work through some of that. So while math reading and ELA have had some good opportunities, we're looking forward to seeing how we can implement that a little bit better.
I appreciate your honesty there, because I know it's always hard to do things, that's good. Although the very, when I first heard about these, it was actually a middle school that was, was telling me about it. And of course, if you're sharing resources, that's, that would be hard.
You know, and I've talked to some other middle schools, and they've had, actually, Sharon Dean from the K twenty center, she said the one that she was at, they actually had two plans for each teacher. They had their regular plan, and then they had like their group, group planning, and I was like, ooh.
Well, that's going to be pretty tricky.
Yeah, thank you.
We're seeing similar things at the high school. As Mrs. Martini said, sharing staff makes it a challenge, and the way the schedule is structured this year, we don't have content areas that have their planned time at the same time. So that makes it very much a challenge. That's something we're going to be looking at. I know that Mrs. Martini had a conversation with Sharon Dean last week, I did as well. And that's one of the things that she and I discussed was that we are needing to find some of those structures that we can put into place to be able to have that common plan or the time together.
And it's a real challenge at the secondary level, as we all know, with student activities and student programs. And so, but, you know, that's not a barrier for us to do that. We know we can, we can create some opportunities, and so this will be a good time, first to tackle those challenges.
Do you have like two freshman English teachers or just one?
It's kind of a mixed bag. You know, there might be two different teachers that have freshmen. It's not necessarily just the one teacher, it kind of crosses. So, I mean, whether it be ELA or it be different, different subject matter, whether it's social studies or math, trying to figure out who is teaching, you only teach English one, you only teach algebra one, and that's been very difficult.
It's kind of a staff, I mean, honestly, it's probably a bit of a staffing issue from a financial perspective, you know, making sure that our payroll costs are where they need to be, but we've also managed our class sizes where our community wants. And so finding that balance makes, it makes it really difficult to do what some of those schools that are larger are able to do at a department level. schools that are larger are able to do at a department level that we're not able to. But we still believe there are some things we can do that we can create to at least create some more opportunities, so.
Thank you.
The next action step was to evaluate resource-based retention and employee job satisfaction strategies. And so one of the things I just wanted to list, and I think it's more maybe of a celebration just of what this board has done and our administrators and community through the teacher contract and through incentives for our teachers and all of our support staff. So you talk about short-term leave in our teacher contract. Teachers are allowed to have an hour and a half, they can, or two hours, they can leave early or be late with a family emergency or go watch a child play or grandchild perform. And that's a great benefit. I've been to many, 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 many meetings, and I have not seen a teacher contract anywhere in the state that allows this for teachers. So I think that's a kudos to this board and previous boards for making that a part of the contract because it's, you just won't find it anywhere else. Stipends for all of our staff over the last seven years, the stipends that we've been able to give our employees, has been a great thing. Three and a half percent increase to all extra duty stipends. At least over the last seven years, we've increased the three and a half percent for all of our extra duty teachers. We know that they spend a tremendous amount of time outside of school working, and this board has done a great job of acknowledging those things through that increase. We believe it's a selling point when we talk to folks that are going to have to take on extra duties. We believe that that really does help us. Again, our partnership with Northwestern, entry to all athletic contests at Northwestern and precipitated that for their employees here. Again, we just think that's another added benefit for our employees and for our community. And so appreciate Dr. Hannahford and Mr. Franz for their work and help through that. And I know our employees have really enjoyed that, that benefit. Access to indoor facility. We know that mental well-being and health is important, and so there's a process for our employees if they would like to go check out a key through our indoor facility, they can go up there and use that. We believe that that was one of the things through a survey that we heard, and so we've been able to do that, acknowledge that. Ms. Martini and Dr. Nicewonder have been working on the grow your own program, so we've talked about that already. Additional five steps to the teacher salary schedule. Not sure how long we've done that. That's been a real added benefit when you look at hiring and recruiting and retaining teachers, which is a big part of the equation now also for all districts. And then finally, acceptance of out-of-state years of service. Did that a few years ago, and again, when you look at recruiting and retaining and finding the best, I think that's been a big help. So really kudos to this board and previous boards and previous administration because these have all made our school district a better place to work and a great place to work for employees. And so, so thank you all. And we'll continue to, you know, we have always asked our employees, what are some things we can do? And we're always thinking of ideas, and I know each building has some different things that they acknowledge employees through, and so we'll continue to do those things also.
I would like to thank the administrators because it's not easy to get everybody to play off the same plate out sometimes. And you get, because everybody's subject matter is what's the most important thing. So thank you for your, if you're not the best cheerleader in the group, they don't want to follow. If we all walk in and go, wrong, we have to do this, none of us want to do it. But evidently, you all approached it beautifully, so thank you. And hang in there.
When I might mention, February 17th, planning to have a special board meeting during the day with administrators and transportation and IT to look at capital planning, which is a critical part of our strategic plan, that we can begin to lay out some ideas for what we want to do for capital improvement. But again, want to really emphasize, appreciate the administrators' work, this board and previous boards' work to make Alba Public Schools a shining light in Northwest Oklahoma and a place that people want to work in. So thank you all. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Thanks for your reports. Item number six, 6.1, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one and applicant number two, non-certified positions for the remainder of the 2223 school year.
We have two non-certified positions that we have offered employment to. Raina Taylor, she will be a teacher assistant in pre-K, and Morgan Wagner is going to replace a resignation as a paraprofessional. Mr. Feely and Ms. Lovelace have both been involved in the interview process. Appreciate them doing that, and I would recommend approval of these two non-certified positions.
Motion? Sound good.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item number 6.2, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the revised extra duty assignments for '23. Is there anything we revise more than this?
And we'll bring it back next month, I'm sure. So want to start first, if you look on the third page, you'll see Mia Jones there. Mia came and helped us from the months of January, February with our middle school basketball, the prorated amount of $400 you can see there. And then we also made an addition, a very important addition. Ms. Murrow was not on there as the head sponsor for junior class. Ms. Murrow does a fantastic job, and we are very lucky to have her take on that extra duty for us, and so we bring that to the board for approval.
Motion?
Move to approve item 6.2.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item number 6.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a supplemental appropriation for the gift fund number 81 for fiscal year '23.
So this supplemental appropriation takes into account the donation made by Alba State Bank for $50,000. As you remember from last month, that donation go towards music at our middle school and high school level and also our band. We have already got information from those teachers on some items that they would like. Approval of this appropriation allows us to begin spending that money immediately to get that equipment for those teachers.
What do we have, a little unformed generosity?
Yes.
Motion to approve this supplemental appropriation?
Make a motion to approve 6.3.
Second. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
I'm sure the arts programs will do those wonderful thank you notes that the rest of our programs send, that are signed by all the kids, and it's wonderful. So I hope, I hope they'll do those as well at Alba State Bank. 6.4, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a contract with Share Medical Center for nursing services for the remainder of the 2223 school year.
This is the reference from the purchase order earlier. This is the contract for services through Share Medical Center. I want to once again thank Candace Allen and Mr. Feely for working on this together. We think and we believe that this could be the beginning of a really good partnership with the hospital on some multiple needs in the future. Feel like this will be a good opportunity for us to kind of have a trial run on how a service contract would work within and with some possibilities of expanding that in the future. So I appreciate their work on this. I believe this will be good for our kids, and I would recommend approval of agenda item 6.4, our contract with Share Medical Center.
Is it possible for us to someday look at this like you just said, but like we do the resource officers and be able to have a school nurse?
You know, we have a lot of services right now, whether it's occupational therapy to physical therapy to our resource, school resource officer. So that's our hope. That's the direction that we'd like to. Some certified training for some treatment of injuries is also something that we're exploring. So we just really appreciate Share. It's a great partnership, just like we have a Northwestern and a Career Tech. We've got some great partnerships, and we're trying to leverage those even more, and they've got great leadership that are helping us.
That's great. Motion?
Make a motion to approve 6.4.
I second the motion.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Any new business?
No, ma'am.
And signing a document that's approved by earlier action. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I saw one.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.